This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
We work with the conditions we were given.
Oh, yes, we do. Appreciate the patience. I was just pointing to board.
Oh, I was just, I thought, I thought we had somebody waiting to speak here. Our, the staff report is complete. It's time to welcome the applicant.
Yeah. And we can share a screen with the applicant.
Yeah, I do need AKS Engineering on the screen. So I'll wait for someone to introduce the applicant's name.
Thank you, members of the Planning Commission, city staff. My name's Chris Godell, spelled G-O-O-D-E-L-L, AKS Engineering. And I'm here to talk about application and prepared the materials that you have before you. A brief slideshow that I wanted to show, so I don't know if staff needs to grant us permission or how that works, but we'd like to show that. Hang on just a second here. Okay.
The Chris Godell guy's talking right now.
Oh, he is.
Yeah, he's going to show a slideshow.
I'm not quite sure who that was, but they were correct. Thank you, Chris with AKS Engineering. And I'm here with a number of members of the project team. And I wanted to thank the Planning Commission for their time and consideration of our application and the materials. As Colin mentioned, we, we have broad agreement on the application, the approval criteria, and we appreciate that. Just to provide a bit of information as to how the application was created, all the work that went into it, the different fields of expertise that were involved. We've got a basic slide. Our client is Tuck Willa Development LLC. They have built many high-quality subdivisions, master plan communities, plan unit developments, residential, multifamily. And so they're a very experienced development team, and we're thrilled to be working with them. With, with us here tonight also is Kelly Hosseini from Miller Nash Graham &amp; Dunn. She is the applicant's legal counsel. In addition, we have Todd Mobley from Lancaster Mobley, who is the traffic engineer who prepared the traffic analysis that is included in the application. So our team, AKS Engineering, for us, we provided surveying services, civil engineering, natural resource permitting, and a variety of other things that went into creating the application. And again, we're really happy to be here in front of you tonight and to discuss the application. And again, appreciate staff support. So I, just a couple of the highlights, Colin did a really good job of explaining the applications. And so I just, you know, these are the different land use applications that we have before you here. We've obviously got an annexation which Colin talked about that will assign the city zoning to the property. There's no comprehensive plan map amendment or anything like that. The applicant is accepting the, the city's transition zoning for the property, just see straight to RS, no, nothing else. In addition, there's a property line adjustment, subdivision, and a plan unit development and an R permit because there is a stream running through the golf course property. Colin did a good job of explaining where the property is. I don't have anything to add other than this slide. This is the property zoning that is included with the annexation. So you've got residential, single-family around the perimeter of the golf course site, and that will be designated public, semi-public zoning. And there is the R quad overlay that runs through the property. You can see the blue dots. One of the things, we spent a great deal of time with city staff. Some things are fairly obvious with the property of this configuration. You're going around the golf course, you're going to have a road that kind of follows around it, and that's, that's what we have. We have a number of street extensions that are included to provide for, in the future, if adjacent properties are to redevelop, the golf course, properties to the south, and then also properties to the north. You never know what the future may hold, and so that's, those are provided for those potential eventualities. Colin, good job of explaining the open space amenities, and I'm going to spend a bit more time on it because I think that's one of our client's strongest suits is providing communities with, with excellent open space amenities. And just a couple of slides, we'll talk about some of these, these features. This plan here shows where they're located. So is, is a small area of open space that's on the entryway to the, to the project with Boons Ferry Road. So the idea here is it's going to provide an area for entryway monumentation, landscaped area, a wider sidewalk than is normal. And we also have a inclusion of an area for a potential bus stop. We talked with, with staff about that, and we thought it was appropriate to put that aside for that. So our client is, is providing the land for that bus stop to be put in in the future. And, and we'll talk a little bit about that here in a few minutes, but I just wanted to highlight that. This smaller space is a pedestrian path, is a number of pedestrian paths included in the project. And this one here is, is important, we think, and we had it in there from, so basically the outset, is we thought it would be important at this location here, which is in the northern section of the property, to connect the internal street system out to the frontage street, which is Boons Ferry Road. So it's going to have a nice wide path with landscaping, seating, bike parking, and staff also was encouraged to have trash receptacles. So, so things like included here. This here, this is the open space area that we have in the northern area of the site. It's got a shelter with a picnic bench. It's got landscaping, obviously, big lawn areas, and a fitness area. So the idea here is this would be probably one of the, the more active open space areas that we have in, in the project. This is on the eastern edge of the property, and it coincides with the drainage running through the property. So there's a, a lot of natural area, open space here that's set aside. And so the idea there is to, is as much as possible, leave it in its existing state. Staff has conditioned some, some plantings to go in, in these areas, and that's in a condition of approval, and it seems appropriate. But we've got some other things in there as well, like seeding. There's also a condition for bike parking, and one of the stormwater facilities that serves the site is also planned in this location. These just show right now, the, the existing golf cart paths go through the property, and these, the slide, that they're going to be realigned and reconstructed and, and provided access through the subdivision like you see elsewhere in, in the area. And this is on the western edge of the property, and it's also a, a stormwater management facility, but it's also got a wide pedestrian path with seating and associated landscaping. So it's going to be a nice area that's set aside and, and green space and no homes built in there. And this shows roughly some of the different amenities, what, what they would look like, and that has certain conditions of approval in there. So these are sort of the concepts we, we provided, and staff's conditions are a little more specific as to exactly how these features would look. But this is, this was our conceptual drawings here. So I guess rather than, you go back to the main open slide, thank you. Right, thank you. So like I said at the outset, we think we put together a real, a high-quality product for the city. I've, I've received multiple calls from people actually living in the surrounding subdivisions that are looking to, to buy a home in the subdivision already. So there's a lot of interest. It's, housing is needed in the city, and this project will accommodate that. We did receive from city staff a number of letters that were also shared with the Planning Commission from, from neighbors and, and residents. And I just wanted to briefly answer some of the questions that, that they had because we, we think, we appreciate neighbor feedback, and we want to, want to address their, their comments. So one comment that was provided, I think in at least two of the letters that we saw was questions surrounding the, the, the open space area here and whether or not this project would have HOA, or would it join a surrounding HOA? And would this age, would residents of this subdivision be able to access open space amenities and other subdivisions in the areas that aren't part of this project? And the, the, the idea, their applicant would like to, they're going to have their own, the plan right now is to have their own homeowners association that wouldn't be associated necessarily with any of the other existing homeowners associations in the area. So that wouldn't, this, this project wouldn't have any rights, or the future residents wouldn't have the rights to go utilize swimming pools in the adjacent owner's HOA-controlled amenities. So just like the residents here wouldn't have permission to go into somebody's house or on an adjoining subdivision or in their backyard and do something there, they're not going to be able to go access the, the swimming pools or the amenities on the adjoining subdivisions.
Right.
Uh, let's see. There was a number of comments about street connections and street connectivity, and as I mentioned at the outset, there's really a limited number of ways to provide street connectivity here. And we worked with staff for this, to produce this design, and we think that this design works best for the current condition and then into the future with the street stub that I discussed earlier. We, we worked with city staff, and we, the applicant hired a traffic engineering consultant that provided a traffic study that showed that, that this design here worked well. The vision clearance at the entryway to Boons Ferry is satisfactory, and that the project doesn't generate sufficient traffic to cause problems anywhere off-site. So that's, that was the, what I wanted to say about the traffic. And Glenn, I think now at this point, I, Colin mentioned a couple of, and Chris, I think, put it very well also, that we, we have a decent-sized project here, and we've worked through a lot of issues with city staff, and we've kind of whittled down our points of, we, we were in general agreement regarding most everything, but there's a few points that were, were still not quite there yet. And, and those are the comments that we provided in our letters from yesterday, both, both from, from me here at AKS and Kelly. So I guess what we'd like to do is talk about, I guess, a little bit about the flag lot driveway scenario. And, well, this is a, a drawing here. And one thing I did want to also mention is, is that I, the average lot size in the project is about 6,000 square feet. I think one of the planning commissioners asked about the lot size, and Colin mentioned, I think, 30, 3,700 square feet, and that is the, the very smallest lot in the project. So there is a, a variety of lot sizes, and then 6,000 square foot is the average lot size. So I just want to make that clear. With respect to an increase in density, this, we had laid out this site a number of times in terms of lot sizes, and, and we had a standard subdivision that wasn't a planned unit development, and we had it laid out with 76 lots. And I think Colin had mentioned somewhere around 55 lots. So I, I just wanted to clarify that, that that was not exactly the case. We, with a regular subdivision, slightly larger lots, you'd have 76 lots, is kind of what we came up with. You wouldn't have the open spaces and some of the other things that are included here, but that's, that's what it kind of worked out to be. Um, with respect to the flag lot shared driveway scenario, Colin provided this example as over by the, the golf club itself, and it, it just generally doesn't, it, it's an interesting concept, but it generally doesn't work, given our scenario and, and the layout that we have and the, and the geometry of our site. This, this is much wider, these, these, these lots that are created are much bigger, they have greater lot coverages, they have smaller setbacks, and the geometry is different. They're much wider. So if you look at the example that we have in our project, they're, they're narrower lots. I mean, they, they don't work as well with driveways coming in from the side. They just, they won't function very well, and you'll end up with, we believe, a less attractive streetscape with a, with a side elevation of a home fronting on the main streets as opposed to, you know, nice front doors and porches and people, and, and active environment, you'll, you would have a, you know, a side yard, which is, is certainly, in our opinion, not as attractive as a, a project as, as what we have shown here. And if, if, if we thought it was better, then, then I'm sure our client would have asked us to do it. It just doesn't work here in this scenario. We, with respect to parking in, if we have additional cars and garages coming off this shared driveway, it will exacerbate parking issues. As it stands now, we've, like Colin's slideshow, there's on-street parking that'll just travel the whole way through the project. There's tons of parking available, and, and we don't think that in, in having the shared driveways will, will lessen that. It will be a detriment to the, to the project.
Parking.
Why don't you go to this, this, we talked about, no, not that, the slide, yeah, this here. So I'll be honest, I, I'm not quite sure, I couldn't quite follow Colin, I, when he was talking about this graphic that we prepared. I think the gist of it was that the, the rear yard setback increased from 15 feet to 18 feet was an unintended consequence, and that wasn't what he intended, and he was going to look at changing that, uh, that condition. I guess it's a footnote in the condition that, that says that. And he also said that it wasn't a consider, it wasn't a concern, I believe, on the side yard setback, so that we would have the 15-foot rear and the 10-foot side yard setback. But I didn't hear anything about the front setback, which is the bulk of the lots. And I mean, there's maybe three lots in the, in the subdivision that have street side yards and rear yards abutting another street, but every lot in the subdivision has a front yard fronting on a street just about. And so I didn't, I'm not clear if he was saying that, that we would still need 18-foot for the, for the front yard. So we, so we've got a 20-foot garage and an 18-foot front. And I know whole, they do a lot of different home designs and, and look to have front porches and really attractive, I guess, streetscapes. And, and I, we just think that having additional step back will deter from that, will make the streetscape less attractive and lessen by, we prefer them just to add 15, regardless of utility easement. There really is no impact from a public utility, there's no relationship between the P U E, which is for underground utility, and a setback for it at home. So we'd appreciate it if we considered that. I don't know if give a slide on the bus shelter other than our open space. Why don't you go to that? Yeah, the, the fact bay, I think. Yeah, there. So this is a condition of approval, T, T2 and 3, we deal with the, the bus shelter requirement. And we have conversations with city staff about this from the very outset, I think, of the project, and we, they suggested that we provide either additional right-of-way or an easement, essentially land set aside for a, a future bus shelter. Just since there's no bus service there now, and it's, it's debatable whether there ever will be, it didn't make sense to, to put a bus shelter there, rather just providing the easement so that it was available in the city or the transit, to put a bus shelter in there. And we think that's the way that it should be. There's also an option for paying a fee for a potential bus shelter, which also doesn't make a lot of sense considering there may not ever be transit service there. And we, I guess if, if a fee needs to be paid for a bus shelter, then it should have, we were, our thing, our thought was that it should have some sort of a, it should be put in an account, an escrow account, trust and agency, or something like that. And we would have some sort of sunset clause, like five years if, if there never was a, a bus line, and, and the money just shouldn't be hanging out there forever. It seemed like there should be some way of proofing that. Um, I, Kelly Hosseini has a few additional things to talk about, but I, I guess I wanted to reiterate that our client builds terrific communities, and something here that you're proud of, and there, we're not, I guess, we're in vast, we're in agreement with a vast number of requirements that the city staff has, has played, and we appreciate their work with us on this project. Our client's looking to pay their fair share. They're not looking to skirt out of any, anything that isn't, that they believe their responsibility. And I think Kelly will say more to that effect here. But I wanted to thank you, and, thanks.
We need to, this is Chris. Do we need to change presenting?
Nope, she's here in the room with us, so she, she should be on the screen right now. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. This is Kelly Hosseini with Miller Nash Graham &amp; Dunn. And yeah, I'll just reiterate first, the sentiment that Chris expressed, which is that, you know, we're, Tuck Willa is not trying to get out of paying its fair share. It's just that there are a few conditions that we believe just simply are not constitutional and are really not paying our fair share. It's, it's going above and beyond what we should be required to do. And I'm not going to go through everything in my March 10th letter. I'm, I know that you all received it, and I'm assuming that, that you read it. Thank you, staff. Looks like we're down to now three conditions of approval in my letter that we have an, an issue with. And I guess what's important to understand is that whenever you have a quasi-judicial application like this planned unit development application, you're making ad hoc exactions. And those exactions must have a connection to the, to the impacts of the proposed development, and those exactions must be roughly proportional to the impacts, as I set forth in my letter. And these requirements are known respect, respectively, as the Nolan and Dolan requirements. So what are exactions? They can be land dedication, they can be physical improvements, they can be cash payments in lieu of physical improvements. And the three conditions of approval that we're objecting to involve exactions, and all of them, we believe, have a constitutional defect, and that they don't meet Nolan or Dolan or both of those. And I'm not going to discuss each of those four conditions in detail, because again, you, you have my letter. But as an example, the, I'll take the traffic studies. If there was evidence in the record that the Trillium P U D had some sort of measurable impact on the three intersections at issue, and if the city had quantified that impact and then required Tuck Willa to pay for a portion of those studies commensurate with its impact, then that would likely meet Nolan and Dolan. But no such analysis exists, and the burden is on the city to provide a defensible analysis. The burden is not on Tuck Willa to demonstrate that its project doesn't impact those intersections. But I will say, however, there was evidence in the record that the project has no measurable impact on those intersections. If it did, the city would have required Tuck Willa to include more in its traffic impact analysis. So the missing elements in those conditions of approval are constitution-based, and that's, and for that reason, the city can't impose those conditions on the applications. Now, this evening, what I heard staff say is that the traffic studies and the high school crossing can be conditioned because the P U D allows the city to ask for what is calling commensurate public benefits. And that appears to come from the section of your code 5.03.06, Plan Unit Development Conceptual Plan, conceptual, conceptual development plan approval. And one of the criteria is that the requested flexibility and development standards is justified by commensurate public benefits. Well, I think what's happening is that staff is kind of expanding the definition of what is a commensurate public benefit in the context of a P U D. Because even the purpose section of 5.03.06 states that P U Ds are governed by section 3.09. And when you look at what's in section 3.09 as part of the purpose statement, it describes what these public benefits are. It says, "In exchange for the ability to modify development and use standards, P U Ds must provide open, a common open space and enhanced public amenities." And then when you read through that code section, it talks about what the requirements are for that common open space and enhanced public amenities. And those are the, the public benefits that are being required by your code as far as a P U D. Enhanced, the commensurate public benefits are not things like traffic studies or signals that we don't have any part of, or paying 100% for a, a crossing next to the high school when, you know, we may have an impact of about 2% on it. So I really think that, that staff is mixing apples and oranges. And when you look at, what do you get with a P U D that you don't get with the straight subdivision, which, again, we could have done that and could have had about 76 lots. You don't get the open space. You don't get the, the other amenities that we're providing, such as the, the, the trails and, and some of the other things that, we've got these lovely pictures up here. Those are the things that you get with the P U D. Those are the commensurate benefits, and we've provided those. But I think where staff has gone wrong is they, they've gone beyond that and just start picking out other things in the city that they would like to see done and say, well, okay, well, we'll throw that in too. And I think the city is very much at risk on these things that we've objected to, because like I said, under the law, it is the city's responsibility, the city has the burden to show the connection and to quantify the exact, and that has not been done. And so I, I don't think it's defensible. And I will stop there, and I, I don't know how staff wants to proceed, but we can take questions, but I'll leave it up to staff to decide how they want to move forward.
Hi, Kelly. I'm Sharon Corning. I'm one of the commissioners. You said you had three conditions of approval. I, I agree with a lot in your letter. You said three conditions of approval you still have an issue with, so can you tell me which ones those are?
Oh, sure. So it's a condition T dash A1, which is the traffic signal timing studies, and then condition T dash B P 1, the pedestrian improvements of the high school. It, it appears that staff is deleting the upgrading the golf cart crossing condition, and that was part of the off-site improvements, P U D dash 3 point D sub 2. And so the, the third one that, that we're still objecting to is the off-site road frontage improvements, and that would be the improvements to Hazlenut and that little orphan piece of Boons Ferry Road down on the south area, if I'm getting my, yeah. Does that help? Sure, you're welcome.
More questions from the staff here, or staff or from, for her, or do we go on to someone else?
Find out if any of the commissioners have questions of the applicant before you move on to testimony.
Just in general, how big are the houses? Approximate cost of them? Anybody? Anybody?
So
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Chris. We don't have you on the screen if it's confusing. We apologize. We're
juggling around. All right. Well, probably not worth on the screen anyways. But here I am. So that kind of information, we don't have that yet. The homes would likely be in similar size to the surrounding area. In terms of the, the future prices, that again is dictated based on market conditions and, and that fluctuates. So it would, it would be the, the market rate for the, for the area, basically. So that's what, uh, that's the best way I could really answer that question. It's a question that comes up frequently and it's a good one. It's just one that we don't usually have the answer to at this point in time.
Do we have any more testimony by the proponent?
Anyone who, anyone who's watching or listening, if you wanted to speak in favor of the application, now would be the time.
If anyone wants to speak, please state your full name and your mailing address, please.
Any other?
Yeah, it sounded like someone was coming on, but. All right. Do we have testimony by opponents, those who are against this project?
I recognize and believe Griff Lindell on the screen indicated he wanted to speak.
Yeah, Griff Lindell, 494 Tuck Willa Drive, Woodburn. I represent Renaissance Reserve homeowners, which includes the houses, contemporaries to the project off of Olympia. And it's probably too early, but I want to ask now. Our concern has to do with construction traffic. Should this be improved? And what stipulations will the city have to mitigate construction traffic coming through Tuck Willa Drive? Either turning on Truner or Turnberry to get to Olympia to go into the project. We would like some stipulation from the city to the developer that all construction traffic will come into the project from Trillium Place, which seems to be the name of the street that's feeding into Boones Ferry. Is this the time to bring that concern up?
Yeah. This is Chris Kerr, the community development director. I appreciate the comment. Just so kind of bring everyone up to speed on exactly how these projects tend to go forward. After assuming a project's approved, as we work through the engineering studies, we work through grading permits. And as part of that process, we always work through a sort of an erosion control plan. And we actually have a, a truck traffic plan where we delineate work usually with the contractor about how we're going to bring truck traffic in. We customarily keep them away from residential streets, keep them on primary roads. We're interested in truck wash stations. Making sure it gets washed down, the typical kind of erosion control issues that we have. If I'm, there's certainly no reason the planning commission couldn't make that recommendation for a condition going forward to ensure that truck traffic doesn't drive through Tuck Willa, construction truck traffic. But I'd really, actually I'd like to hear from the applicant. They may be actually willing to offer that up as a, a condition for the neighbors if they so, if they were so inclined, make it a lot easier.
If, Chris, if this is appropriate, would you like me to, to discuss now?
I think that'd be great.
Okay. Chris, sorry. This is Mackenzie. Can we wait until rebuttal? I'd like to get all the public comments in before the applicant jumps back in. My apologies, Chris.
Griff Lindell wants to speak.
Yeah, I have one other concern that homeowners in my development have, in my HOA have given me and it was kind of addressed twice, but not directly. And that is that you're putting in 90 homes with no swimming pool. And the development in the Tuck Willa community, all the seven different HOA, they're all but one, a major one, have swimming pools. And our concern was that the Renaissance Reserve Swimming Pool is really close by to homes on Olympic. And yes, I know that, that we can control entry, et cetera, but it seems silly to me that out of 90 lots, one lot can't be reserved to put in a swimming pool. And you charge $500 more per lot and you've raised, what, almost $50,000 to build a swimming pool and two restrooms. So I'd like AKS to speak to, why is there no swimming pool? And has there been any discussion about using one of the lots to put in a pool? Thank you.
Ask if anyone else wants to speak.
Yeah. Well, wait a word. Can we take everybody and then make a sound to them?
Okay.
Is there anyone else who wanted to testify from the public? Now would be the time.
Dylan Wells, resident 10408 Crosby Road, Woodburn, Oregon. Are the, my question was, are the HOAs managed by, or are the green spaces in the HOA managed by the HOA or will they be managed by city?
Again, I think, I think we'll just collect the questions from the applicant and during rebuttal, the applicant can speak towards each and staff can as well. Appreciate the question. Did you have anything else?
No, I do not at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Was there anyone else who wanted to testify on the project from the public?
We haven't gone to opponents, have we?
Yeah, any, anyone who wants to testify, opponent, proponent, neutral.
I think we've covered it all.
I think we have.
Okay. Doesn't sound like we have anybody. Do we have any rebuttal by the applicant to anything that's been brought up?
Sure. Yeah, I, I wouldn't qualify it as rebuttal, but I'd like to respond to some of the, the questions that were asked. And let me get my glasses here. Vision's poor. So Mr. Lindell asked two questions. The, the first one, and, and Chris Kerr asked us to respond to this as well. And it's a question that comes up in, in almost every hearing. You know, we do lots of hearings and it comes up all the time and it's always a, a, a good question. That's always difficult to answer at this point because as Chris Kerr properly stated, that that's something that really gets worked out with between the city, public works and engineering staff. It works, a traffic plan gets created and the contractor and the engineer and the, the city staff kind of develop how the, but the appropriate methodology of construction access is and flagging and all that kind of stuff. Based on just the way that the site is served by access, it's the obvious and logical location for truck traffic to come from Boones Ferry Road. That's just, that's the way it, it will happen. There, there may be instances, however, where, where that can't happen for, if there's a trenching going through or whatnot, but, and then that's the bulk of the construction is traffic. You'll see, there may be some things that need to go through the subdivision to the south, but we don't, we don't see that happening, but we certainly would, if it, if it makes people comfortable and, and, and works for the city, we certainly wouldn't mind. I don't know if there's an existing condition that could be tweaked or at, or one that could be added that says that the applicant will work with city staff and the contractor to minimize construction traffic through the subdivision to the south to the maximum degree practicable or something like that. That makes sense. That way, if something had to go through there, then it wouldn't be precluded, but the vast majority would be going through, going, coming from Boones Ferry Road, which is what we would think would happen anyways. But if that makes sense to the city staff and the planning commission, then, then that's something that the applicant would, would be in favor of. There's, Mr. Lindell also asked about a swimming pool. And before our client goes ahead and, and makes a purchase and sales agreements and then, and figures out if they're going to look at an area of town or to build a, a community, they do a lot of market studies and they determine variety, they look at a variety of things, you know, amenities, obviously in a PUD like this. And in, in this, and they, in some cases, swimming pools are, are, are something that gets done. Lots of the ones we've seen are indoors. I mean, this being Oregon, swimming pools are, you know, you, you get a minimum amount of use for them. Not much bang for your buck. So their market study didn't show that a swimming pool was desirable here and, and that's why it's not part of the PUD plan. Another question that came up, and this comes up frequently. We work on projects that are surrounded by other subdivisions with HOAs is, is who's going to maintain this, these open space tracks? Is it going to be us or is it going to be the city or is it going to be the developer? And in this case, the, the plan is for the, the developer to maintain the open space tracks. Eventually it gets handed over to the residents and they, the HOA, essentially the HOA for this subdivision will be responsible for ownership maintenance and all those things with, associated with, with any of these open space tracks. And hopefully that, that's clear. So thank you very much for the opportunity to respond to the questions. And if additional questions do come up, we would, we welcome answering them, questions from the planning commission, especially before the, the hearing is closed. We'd like to be able to discuss any, anything that you have. And otherwise we would appreciate your approval of the application here this evening. Thank you very much.
Do we have anyone that wants to speak in opposition? Are we, are we going to still, are we still on?
I think we asked everybody. I didn't hear anyone that, that wanted to testify from the public. I think we had a rebuttal. I thought staff had had some comments at the end before you closed the public hearing. If that's okay.
That's fine. Let's do that.
Does that sound right, Mackenzie?
Yes. Any further questions for staff or any other details that staff can provide? And then yes, you can close the hearing after that.
Yeah, I've got one more question. This is Rick Haskell. I live at 2832 Olympic Street on the dead end from the south. Renaissance Reserve. I'm wondering if any consideration was ever given to the idea of actually keeping the dead end. It's obviously an amenity to the people that live on this side of it. And it would be the same amenity to the people that live on the other side of it. It's a benefit to live on the end of a dead end. I'm not sure that I see any advantage to opening that street up. I don't see people from Trillium wanting to come south or people from Renaissance Reserve wanting to go north. Just wondering if anybody ever thought about that.
Hi, this is Colin speaking. Could you repeat your address, please?
Yes, 2832 Olympic Street.
So is there, is there any, do you have any more questions or comments, Mr. Haskell?
No, that was it.
Great, great. Is there anyone else who wanted to testify all on this, from the public? Thanks.
Dylan Wells at 10408 Crosby. I'd like to testify that I am for this proposed development.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I recommend the applicant would respond to that later.
You had one more comment. If, if you had something to add to that, Chris or anyone from your team?
You, so just to be clear, I can respond to Mr. Wells, who was in favor of the application and we are too.
He had asked about leaving, a question about leaving it as a closed cul-de-sac or a dead end road.
Right. You know, I was kidding. Sorry about that. I, I, it's a street. I mean, I think you, Chris or Colin could speak better than me, but I, I think you probably have a, an ordinance that requires connections to streets, existing street stubs and understanding is that's what this, this was and what it is. So from the very get-go, I don't think there was any question in our mind that would be required, but maybe you have something to add. Thank you.
Great. Madam Chair, if Eric, maybe staff can make a few comments just on the comments that we got before we close the public.
I think that's a good idea.
The first one is just, and Colin or Mackenzie, feel free to jump in. Yeah. Question about whether or not that could be, continue to be a, a long cul-de-sac. There's a couple of reasons why that isn't. A, we have, we have specific code requirements that require us to make those connections, not just with our overall transportation system plan, but even more so under the fire code. That existing dead end out there doesn't need a lot of fire code requirements. I was actually surprised since the first day I came here that that existed, as was the fire marshal when he came. Yeah, that's a, I certainly understand why, how it can be an amenity for the folks to live on the end, but bigger picture in terms of public safety, it's not something that we allow under our code or the fire code would ever permit. We have to make those connections to come out. I wanted to touch on, and I appreciate all the comments and questions that came in. If you didn't mind, coming back a little bit to some of the conditions of approval and some of the discussions. In my head, I'm sort of grouping them in terms of, and these are the ones that came in yesterday from the applicant. We've been discussing. I keep thinking of three of these, if you don't mind me grouping them up. Could you pull that one back up? With all the condition list on. I keep thinking three of these is, I think of them as design oriented ones, flag lots in this driveway issue. So we talked about setback issue in the PUE, which is increasing setback where PUE is expanded. And I think the other was for the construction of a shelter. And I think I'm getting those right under the AKS memo. Did I get there? I think that's the third AKS one. Yeah, Transit Shelter and Bus Transit Bike Park, T12. I think of those as, again, where those came from, and that's the real genesis of these conditions from staff. These ones we were talking about, these remain ones, has to do with the fact that this is an annexation that the city's considering. So the city needs to make a decision as to whether or not they want to bring in a new residential subdivision for 90, for 90 new homes to come into town. And does that represent, you know, what we have criteria and comprehensive plan requirements for annexation, looking for orderly, efficient development and how, and how it's going to, how we're going to grow as a community. And making sure all public facilities are in place as those come in. And I think those design ones touch on that, but even more so, it really gets this idea of what a planned unit development is. And I respectfully disagree with a few of the comments that were raised by the applicant relating to whether or not we can, staff can suggest and recommend conditions of approval about what we think are commensurate public benefits. Because the applicant receives distinct benefits by going through the PUD process. They talked a little bit about what it means in terms of density. So we're just talking flat out about additional units they get to have on their site. Choosing to go through a standard subdivision process, true, doesn't mean if the dedication or pardon me, a requirement to keep 30% of your site has open space. But in this case, that open space is almost exclusively private and it's a private golf course. There are some private walkways that go through here, but the tracks that they're referring to are private. The public's not allowed to walk on those or use those or not allowed in the golf course. And I think staff's opinion is that there are some reasonable recommended conditions of approval that we've come up with that we think are commensurate with the benefits that they're receiving through the flexible design. And that gets to having smaller lots, gets to having additional density. And it gets to, and again, it doesn't say that it's, there aren't enhancements that have been made to the project. There are. But this is just staff's opinion and that's why they're recommending conditions of approval that we're comfortable with. We believe that they're reasonable. We believe that they're reasonable, and the funding off-site transportation requirements, those are recommendations from staff that we feel are consistent in order to provide a public commensurate benefit for the, for the city and community related to the benefits that the applicants receive. That's where they come from. Now, whether or not we're right or not, that's really a discretionary decision to come back for you, perfectly reasonable arguments raised by the applicant. And again, we're very, very close on all these conditions, but we disagree on some of those. I just wanted to kind of lay out, that's where, that's the, that's where staff comes from. That's our belief, and we we feel pretty good about it legally, unless Mackenzie tells me that we're off-base again. And I did want to point out one in particular, because again, those are very discretionary. That's where we got them from. We've had a lot of discussions with the applicant about them. There's one in particular that I did want to focus in on, because I think it's slightly different. And it's the requirement for, it's an off, it's being called an off-site road frontage improvement. It's PUD 3F and H. What this is talking about, do you have a map of that corner?
Yeah, it might want to mention that that's what the applicant calls it, but it's actually not an off-site improvement.
Right, so, and again, this is a disagreement that we have with the applicant. But I do want to point this out, because I think this is an important one. Or as I'm concerned, the most important one, I think, where we have a disagreement. Staff's opinion is that this is not a off-site request from staff. This is a code requirement that has to be met per the street section of our code. It's a boundary street. We have a requirement in our code that boundary streets must meet at least some minimum standards, and they're called out in the code. The applicant, you can, I'm not going to paraphrase their argument, and it's discussed in there. They don't believe that it is, they don't believe that it's a public improvement, because it's outside the PUD. It is being annexed into the city. And when it gets annexed, there's going to be a dedication of right-of-way along there. The city does not typically accept public right-of-way unless it meets our public standards. Otherwise, we, the city, the community, are on the hook for making those improvements down the line. That's why we make development pay for itself when it comes in. So that particular condition, again, opposed to the other ones, which I think are a little more design-oriented and recommendations that I think are reasonable disagreements with the applicant. I do believe, again, I I wouldn't mind if Dago, who's the city engineer, or Mackenzie wanted to chime in, I do believe that that is a code requirement. And not doing it is something that we would have to apply and go through a variance process for. We do believe it's a boundary street, it's part of the PUD, it touches the PUD, it's the edge, that's the boundary of the PUD, and it's the boundary of the annexation area. Where we're talking about on the screen is in that southwest corner. And we're talking about the north side of Hazelnut. It's a very unusual property, and the applicant's sort of inheriting an existing problem. Hazelnut down there, on the north side of Hazelnut, unimproved, there's nothing outside the curb. I do not know the condition the street was built in. It's not thoroughly located in the city, wasn't built any city standards. But that's now going to be a road in the city, and we require these to be built to city standards, or to something close to it. We have a different process to get there. Does that sound accurate, Mackenzie, or is there something I'm missing? Because I think that one condition, I have more concern over than the other, than the other ones that are called out in two memos.
Sure, Chris, so Planning Commission, Mackenzie Grant, I'm your Assistant City Attorney here. We did review the code section on this very specifically to look at, you know, what is the definition of a boundary street? Where do boundary streets, you know, apply to this type of project, and what's required of the code? And it's very, it is extremely specific, and, you know, it says that, you know, with development, the internal boundary and connecting streets shall be connected or constructed to at least the minimum standards, you know, provided by the WDO. So again, this is a, while it may seem like it's disconnected from the remainder of the project, again, as Chris emphasized, this is a part of the entire annexation, and ensuring that the boundary street comes with the commensurate improvements and is paid for by the developer is extremely important to the city. I'm happy to answer any other questions about the other conditions of approval or the proposed, the proposed conditions.
Thanks.
So you were talking about PUD 3F and H? Is that what you were saying? Okay. And then, but not PUD, oh, PUD 3.
That's somewhere that's there, the part of PUD 3 that talks about improved, street improvements generally, and thereby includes that part of the frontage.
Wanted to appeal PUD 3. I think it's PUD 3 and PUD 3F and H. So there's, I wanted, I just wanted to know.
So the PUD 3, the opening statement that basically says street improvement shall be as follows. And Part A for Boone's Ferry Road basically says per code, and then talks about an exception for planner strip, which is indirectly relevant. And then farther down in Part F, talks about sidewalks. Basically, the condition is worded, yeah. Oh, so this is Colin speaking. Just addressing Sharon Corning's questions about condition PUD-3. I was gonna rephrase much of what Chris said, very briefly. One factor is that this is the development that is proposed in concert with the annexation. And an annexation, at the end of the day, is a simple question of whether or not the city will expand its boundaries in a particular area. And it is a council decision, and council has quite a bit of discretion on that question. Second observation is it is a planned unit development, and it's discretionary, and what the term indicates is as opposed to development that is by the book, in other words, there are clear and objective standards that are met or not, the applicant has opted to do a discretionary type of development, the PUD, which involves back and forth between the city and the developer about what public amenities the city is getting in exchange for modifications. Because the development proposed essentially can yield more profits to the developer, because there are more homes than would be allowed in the standard subdivision. And that is the crux of the issue is the city sees it.
Yeah. So are we amending the recommended conditions of approval?
Oh, if I may, I can bring up slides and may help with that.
If you have questions, you can ask somebody to be good to close the public hearing. If you were, if you had more questions, we can take them. I just want to make sure we close the hearing, or we went on. Any deliveries?
Thank you, Chris. That's what I was just gonna jump in and say.
Barbey? I mean, it seems very vague now, the whole, I mean, you know, they got the lock thing out, but otherwise it sounds very vague.
So we're gonna, we're gonna close the public hearing, and then we'll go to yours.
So it looks great to me. Only thing, I I agreed with a lot of what Miller Nash said, so, but now we've, I think, eliminated most of that conversation. But now I think it's, it's great. I know that neighborhood will be clamoring for a neighborhood, a pool, though.
There's always the aquatic center. They can always come to an agreement with another group, another part of the substitutions out there that have a pool.
Never happened so far.
Well. I'm just concerned because it's so dense. It's, I think it's just that type of development. I mean, it's, we've got a lot of people in a, in a small, tight, very controlled area, and rather popular, actually.
An old-fashioned little.
Yeah. Sharon, did you have?
I have one. Are you ready for a motion?
Sure.
You do want to ask? I didn't hear. I thought Chris was about to say something. Commissioner Lawson, did I miss?
No, I'm fine.
I move the planning commission recommend the city council approve the consolidated applications of Trillium Reserve A and X 2020-01 Annexation, PLA 2020, 202005, Property Line Adjustment, SUB 202001 Subdivision, PUD 202001, Planned Unit Development, RCWOD 202001 Proprietary Corridor and Wetlands Overlay District, ZC 202001 Zone Change, is that right? As described in the staff recommendation, recommended conditions of approval, except removing conditions, PUD-1 and PUD-3.
Everybody's ready? Okay, we're ready to.
Colin, did you get the, yeah, can we get the list of the modified conditions to remove? One more time, Commissioner warning.
Removing conditions, PUD-1 and PUD-3.
I don't, okay, I, yeah, got it.
Oh, is there? Maybe I'm saying the wrong numbers.
I'm concerned that those are not the correct numbers, but I don't want to speak for you.
Okay, let me see here.
What are they related to? We could probably find.
PUD-1 is a modification to condition, future conditions, and PUD 3 is all of the frontage and street improvement conditions consolidated.
Commissioner Corning, where are the two you were looking to pull from? Just in general, we can find great citations. Where were they related?
Well, I started with everything, and then I crossed them out. I, I gave you the whole letter. Let me see.
Well, the ones you, you were not getting, you, you're gonna include all except, maybe call out the two that you weren't gonna include.
Yeah, the cart, 3D2, it's two, yeah, it's PUD, the cart crossing was one of them.
And describing it like that, I think perfectly fine for us to make it actually easier for us to go through the cart crossing.
I have to read her. My notes.
That's the one you, I believe that's the first of the two you wanted to strike. PUD-3, the 2.
Yes.
Yeah, was it, PUD 1, city approved PUD modification only as written, that one?
That is the opening text of the number you mentioned, yes.
Does that not make sense? That was one of the ones that she had made.
Yeah, I know the motion's hanging, but I was gonna say, it doesn't make sense, because that would essentially abolish all the development standards for the development. And I don't think that's the intent.
Okay, for the moment, I'm withdrawing the motion.
We can put a slide up that might help, help us walk us through.
Well, no, I agree with her letter.
Sure.
Sure. If it helps, reading on page three of the letter. This is a Miller Nash letter.
Yeah, yeah.
On page three, there's one related.
Yeah, okay, I've got the one number. So it was the, the paying for the traffic signal timing studies, that didn't seem to make much sense.
Okay.
The the, oh, yeah, I forgot, wrong number.
Sorry.
The pedestrian, pedestrian improvements at the high school.
And they're on the board if you wanted to look, if that helps. So the second one.
I would just let you go through the letter and tell me.
Yes, I'd just like to start, can we start with the wording I had to begin with? Except
You can't. We understand.
Removing conditions, T-A1. Is it the same? Is it the same as in here?
That would be the one about the signal timing studies.
Signal timing studies. And T-BP1, pedestrian improvements at the high school.
It was unclear to me, was that a motion?
Yes, I'm just amending the other motion that I withdrew.
Okay, that is a motion.
Yeah, and we'll restate. I wanted to add one thing.
Okay.
Staff was actually gonna rescind one of these conditions, the next one, on page five that references to Miller Nash. But we weren't even, we're not even proposing that anymore. It's PUD 3D2.
I think was Chris.
Yeah.
Oh, should I put that in there?
You should.
And condition PUD-3D2, upgrading golf cart crossing.
Okay.
So do we need a new second? Probably.
Yes, it does.
I'll make sure we agree.
There's a motion on the table. Those who are in favor of the motion, raise their hands, say aye.
Aye.
I saw Commissioner Lawson raise his hand.
Commissioner Dos Riz?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't know if it's a question or.
I think we got everybody with issues, so you want to. All of those?
Okay.
This is Colin speaking. So, commission has made its recommendation, and I'll recap the motion that was just made. It was essentially a staff recommended except to strike condition PUD-3D2 about the upgraded golf cart crossing, and to strike T-A1 about the signal timing studies, and to strike T-BT1 about the project P36 from the TSP. So staff will go forward and schedule a hearing with the city council for the public hearing, so the council can make its decision. And then, of course, staff will duly make note of the recommendation the commission made tonight against the council.
And that'll be, and for everyone who testified, you'll receive a notice about the city council meeting. There will be another opportunity for public input at that hearing as well. Thank you.
Do you have any other business tonight?
No, ma'am.
I did not. I wanted to update, just provide a little update on upcoming meetings. I wanted, while everyone's here, I wanted to get a quick quorum check. I think I have one from Chris, at least, about the next meeting, which is, what, 25th?
That's correct, 25th of March.
That's correct.
25th of March. We're expecting another quasi-judicial. We're expecting another quasi-judicial hearing on a residential project, involves a PUD on the north side of town, right on Boons Ferry Road. Not, it's actually right across from this development. So, just wanted to be aware of it. Now, if I could get, I don't know if anyone, is anyone here who doesn't think they're going to be here in two weeks? That'd be great. And I'm expecting Chair Piper. My recollection. Good, good. Thank you. I didn't have anything else. Nothing more?
I'm hopeful you're there.
I second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate your patience in this odd room that we're working out of.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Thank you. Good night.
Good night.